I think we'll call this meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll declare the agenda as approved. Are there any announcements from any members of council? No, there's some stuff going on. We just encourage people to check out the town's Facebook page. There's some stuff going on with Peter Oikle, so that'll be very interesting in terms of the town's history. And then, of course, best to Bridgewater, which I hope everyone caught the last couple of weeks. That was great. I will say the outtakes are my favorite part of that. Yeah. If there's nothing else, we'll go down to the minutes. You have the minutes of April 14th and of April 20th, the regular and special council meetings. Any errors or omissions there?
Yes, yes, David. Fire Chief Michael Norris, his name is not on either the 14th or the 20th, and he was at both meetings.
Okay, we can have that added. Any other items on that? Okay, so if everyone's okay with that, we'll make those corrections, Wayne, and those will be approved with those corrections. And we'll go right down to planning items. So 7.1, which is Oakland Drive, the application for development agreement, and I'll turn that over to staff.
Okay, good evening. This is a part of our new process for our planning applications, and we received this planning application and have undertaken the staff review prior to bringing it forward to council. So this is notice that we received this application. Staff have been working on it, and we are moving it to a public meeting. So the application before you, and actually, I don't have a... Normally, we do a little one-page presentation, but I'm just going to share one page from the application briefing. So we have an application from... If this works. I haven't done this in our session.
No, that works.
So you see the elevation drawing and the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the proposal is from numbered company 3307878 Nova Scotia Limited to develop a 14-unit residential development on the lands comprising of multiple properties and a road parcel for Oakland Drive. So it would be on a private road. The lands itself currently have a development agreement on it since 2012, which was for a six-phase, 16-unit residential development, of which phases one and two have been completed. So the land has been subdivided. It has been purchased. The remainder of the lots have been purchased by a new owner, and they have a new proposal for 14 units of residential townhouse dwelling units. As per the site plan that you see, they're building them at the western edge of the Oakland Drive loop. That's their proposal. There will be a public meeting on the matter next Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. It will be via Teams. It'll be our first virtual public meeting. And it will be... So it will be, as you've been holding the council meetings, it will be livestreamed on Facebook, but not interactive on Facebook. We're requesting that people call and register to participate by audio or by video, and we'll provide them with all the link in details. And we will also livestream it. People are also invited to provide written comments to the planning department, and we'll incorporate those into the public meeting. The proposal, so what I've shared with you just shows a draft proposed elevation drawing of what the townhouse units may look like. They've changed a little bit since this was submitted just before Christmas. And again, the 14 units at the far end with a proposed future development at a later date, unknown. And we've been reviewing this as the planning analysis process. Staff have been reviewing this. And you have an application briefing, which is also a new format. So I'd be curious to hear how you felt about how the application was proposed to you. So that's all. Just notice about what this is. And then it will be coming back at a later date with the planning analysis report and other documents.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? If you could just, I'd be very curious to hear how the public meeting goes using Teams. So when that's done, even just a little email to say that was a great success or what we can do to change it. I'm curious, I'm sure council's curious as well.
Yeah, we're doing a test run tomorrow afternoon to make sure all the technology works.
Awesome. Okay, if there's no questions on that, we'll move on to the rezoning of 12 Kensington Court. And am I turning that over to the CAO to start leading us through that one?
Jessica can go over the planning report, and I'll explain the motions for you so we can make sure the motion matches what you want to do.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, so this was the rezoning. It's a single unit, from single-unit residential to two-unit residential, was given first consideration by council at the March 23rd council meeting. And the motion that was the resolution that was given, stated that you gave it first consideration of the proposed map amendments, you know, as contained in document 20-010A to rezone Kensington Court from single unit R1 to two-unit R2, subject to an offsetting agreement regarding wastewater being in place and tentatively schedule the second reading and public hearing. At that time, we had had it supposed to be tonight. We postponed the public hearing until May 11th because of trying to get our virtual public meeting process in place. We also went to the town solicitor to confirm that we had the ability to do a wastewater offsetting agreement with the landowner through the rezoning process. And it is the solicitor's opinion that we do not actually have that authority. So because this is a rezoning, we don't have anything in our public sewer bylaw or in our land use bylaw or development, or rather, planning strategy that enables a wastewater offsetting agreement standalone, separate from a development agreement of which we are authorized to do. And all of the previous wastewater offsetting agreements have been carried out through development agreements. So this was the first time we were considering it with a rezoning all on its own. So there are... Yeah, there are a few options in front of you, and we're bringing this back to you for direction. So the first option is to rescind the resolution in its entirety and deny the rezoning request because we cannot do the wastewater offsetting. So that is one option. The applicant may appeal the refusal of the rezoning to the utility and review board. And also, if and when we brought in policy to address the wastewater offsetting, they would then have to reapply if they wanted to continue and try a second time to have the property rezoned. And the second option would be to rescind a component of the resolution, which is the wastewater offsetting element, and then defer the public hearing and second consideration of the rezoning request at a later date after staff have brought forward amendments to the municipal planning strategy and the public sewer bylaw that would enable wastewater offsetting agreement in this situation. And then the third option would be to rescind the component of the resolution and remove the requirement for wastewater offsetting agreement and consider the rezoning request without the wastewater offsetting. And the last item would be to do nothing, which would move forward to the public hearing next week and require wastewater offsetting agreement with the applicant that is not enabled through our legislation. So those are sort of the options in front of council at this time. Have I missed anything, Tammy?
No, I think that's... So really, it comes down to whether council... The opinion of our solicitor was that council has to have regard for the policy with respect to the capacity of our infrastructure. In this case, it would be a wastewater facility to accommodate the development, which is essentially creating an additional dwelling unit, going from a one-unit dwelling to a two-unit dwelling. So regard means you've considered that, and you have to determine whether or not there's enough concern with that criteria to not proceed. And if you don't wish to proceed without that being addressed, then really, the two options are to deny it, and then you can direct staff to prepare amendments. We'll do that, and then the owner can reapply. Or you can rescind the... Or, sorry, you can rescind the part to do with the offsetting from the motion, which is a partial rescind. It needs two-thirds in favor in order for that to occur. And then you can defer the public hearing until such time as staff has brought back the amendments. There is some concern of the length of time between first reading and when staff would bring those amendments back, and you'd be able to then consider second reading. It could be up to half a year to perhaps longer because a little bit of research is required. And we could be dealing with another council. It could be just a delay. And so there is a little bit of concern with that. And the other is as... Yeah, I guess that's pretty much it, is you either rescind that component and defer, have the amendments come back, and then do second reading, or you essentially rescind that component and consider it without that piece in there at all. Or you deny the request.
So in considering it without the need for the offsetting, we're comfortable that this doesn't set a precedent because we are going down the road of working on some kind of formula that we can use for offsetting. I remember at one of the last meetings, we talked about how, isn't there some kind of algorithm that you can use that says two bedrooms, two toilets equals this? Therefore, the developer pays whatever the... You know, pays X. So does that mean that this one doesn't cascade into a whole bunch coming forward?
The council's intention is to have staff prepare those types of amendments to our planning documents. So if we're considering future applications, we have that guide to enable us to determine what's required and give us a legislative authority to do that. And then I would say that the chances are you'll have those amendments before you, before you're in the situation. Or there won't be that many that come to you that would set, say, a precedent that you're going to get stuck in trap of having to approve these because you've done it for one. And certainly, your intention is to address the issue by directing staff to prepare those amendments.
Well, I would think it would make it easier for the staff and for a developer too, because they'd be able to come forward and say, "By the way, as you go through this process, it's going to cost you X to offset unless you can demonstrate that you have offset it in other ways." Questions from council?
Yes, David. It's my understanding now that we can't add one more unit for Glen Allen Drive. I thought that was a place where there's all kinds of room for growth. We're just adding one apartment. And is one hold that, one handle it?
That was the advice of our engineering department, that the system did not have the capacity right now, given the fact that we're at capacity to handle additional development there without offsetting measures being put in place. And the offsetting measures on-site were not available, given it's a relatively new development.
So, yeah, go ahead, Bill.
So Bill McGinnis here. She would say there's no offsetting measures that can be taken. I guess I'm a little bit in the dark here in the sense that if the system won't take it, why would we even sell... Why would we even consider it? Why would we even set up an agreement, an offsetting agreement? Sometimes, sort of like the carbon tax. If you give enough money, you can get it. So I guess I don't understand.
The intent of the offsetting agreement would have been to have them invest in something off-site that would decrease the flow as much as they're going to increase it from their development. So it offsets it. So it could be an upgrade of a pump station that's happening from the development. Or I don't... Larry's probably best to speak to what types of infrastructure upgrades would be done that could help offset increased flows coming from a development.
And the issue at present is that we actually, in a rezoning, don't have the ability to do or require offsetting. So this rezoning request has come forward, and it needs to be considered. Like, right now, we don't actually have the ability to say, "We need you to do an offsetting measure." We have the... At this moment in time. So either to defer until we bring forward such an ability or to consider it now as it is.
So just for curiosity, how much would that cost the developer for an offsetting measure? Do we have a number?
We don't have a number. And we don't have... And that's part of the challenge that we've been facing with. Been faced with. This is much smaller than, say, the 38-unit residential building that will be going up. But there was a larger study and a development agreement. And, you know, there were some projects happening that they were able to contribute to to offset the additional flow from that building. In this case, we haven't gone through all the steps because of the... At this point, with the applicant, we haven't had them go through all the steps of determining exactly what the amount of flow would be from adding one more unit into the single-unit home. We haven't gone... Because once you have that, then you've... You know, then looking at what the projects are and what the cost would be. Versus bringing in a policy that would have basic... Especially for this sort of... I think in one of our discussions around this, we almost called this like a nuisance. It's so small. It's more like a... You know, it's harder to sort of get down to... The cost to assess it is probably greater than the cost to contribute to a project in the relative scheme of things. And so it's really quite small. So instead of bringing it, our policy would bring in a formula and a set amount so that all of this, having to go and assess each site individually, which is what we've been doing to date. But they've all been larger projects with larger development agreements, and that level of work is already happening. So this is the first time we've had something like this, where we've been considering this.
And it will be a one-time fee?
That's the intent. And the solicitor suggests that we consider the public sewer bylaw as a place where we could put that in. There would also need to be additional policy added into municipal planning strategy to link the two processes together. There's this gap that exists at present between our planning policies and our wastewater infrastructure. And we have to sort of sew that up.
Okay, other questions? This one's a little... Yeah, go ahead, Wayne.
No, it seems like we're just talking about Oakland Drive with a 14-unit building where infrastructure may or may not be a problem. So there's something in place to look after that. Is that what you're telling me?
So with Oakland Drive, fair question. With Oakland Drive, there is an existing development agreement for an existing 14 units that has not been used yet. Hasn't been built. So that is part of why no further offsetting requirement is needed for Oakland Drive because the agreement is already in place for 14 units. Anything beyond that? So where on the site plan, I've identified a future dwelling, that would be subject to, you know, sort of amendments at a future time and would be subject to any offsetting requirements because that's above what council agreed to in 2012.
Thank you, Your Worship. You ready for a motion?
Tammy, do you know which ones were... There's one that staff are guiding us through if we're okay on this one.
Yeah, so I guess it's really, does council wish to deny the request and just kind of close it and then direct staff to prepare amendments? And if the owners want to come back at a later date after the amendments are done to address the infrastructure issues, then they can come back and apply. So that's one, and that's where you would deny. You could look at it and say, "We want to move ahead with this, but we want the amendments in place. We want them to pay the offsetting through whatever amendments we put in place." So if you want to do that, you then would have to rescind that part of the motion that set out the condition that the amendments would be approved subject to an offsetting agreement. Because as Jessica said, we don't have the legislative authority to do the offsetting agreement yet. We need to bring those back to you, and you need to approve them in the form of amendments to your planning documents. So you could rescind that and then pass another motion to defer the public hearing and the subsequent second reading of the applicant's rezoning request until a later date. As I mentioned, there would be quite a delay between first and second reading. You have to take that into consideration. The third option is if you're satisfied that it meets the general intent of the criteria, you've had regard for wastewater, you're prepared to move forward with the amendment without any offsetting, then you can approve the application. And to do that, you need to rescind the part of the motion that had the condition of subject to an offsetting agreement regarding wastewater. So you basically strike that from your original motion, and then we just continue on with the application without having that offsetting requirement apply to that application.
So that's number three?
That's number three. You have a public hearing, and then you would do second reading after the public hearing. Fourth option is really not a good option, and that would do nothing, just charge ahead and require some form of offsetting agreement which you really don't have the authority without amending your planning documents first to provide policies.
So if council's satisfied that this is just one unit, it's a small amount, as our Director of Community Development has said, and we're going to go forward with some kind of policy amendments to tighten this up, then that would be option three for council to consider.
Do you want to motion, Your Worship?
Yes, please.
I will go with option three, that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater rescind the portion of motion 20-070, approved at the March 23rd, 2020 council meeting to remove the phrase "subject to an offsetting agreement" regarding wastewater being in place.
Is that option three?
It is.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I don't know why I'm lens offset. Okay, is there a second or...?
I'll second that, it's Jennifer.
Okay, we'll go with Jennifer. I'll second this one. Further discussion?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
What's the... What do you think the timeline is on developing a policy regarding wastewater offsetting?
So that is... In the report, we suggest somewhere between six and 12 months, and it depends on the complexity of what we bring forward and whether we bring forward sort of a portion of an interim policy as a starting point that would address small applications such as this one, and then bring forward a larger amendment as part of some of the other work that's going on. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay. There's no way to fast-track that a little bit? My fear is... Well, anyway. Okay.
It's hard. It's on the work plan. It's on council's strategic priority work plan. And I have to say, you know, we haven't started doing the work yet because we're... Well, everything got delayed.
Fair enough. Okay. Further discussion? Okay, we'll go around the room again. Counsel McGinnis, yearene.
Yay.
Counsel Fergier.
Yay.
Counsel Thorburn.
Yay.
Counsel McDonald.
Yay.
Counsel Graves.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
And myself in favor. So motion to rescind has passed. Okay. So I'm working on two computers. I have two mice, and I'm trying to figure out which one to use for my next one. So we've got five minutes before the budget. Is that enough time to tackle the... Well, it's just notice for the proposed citizen honorarium reimbursement pilot policy. Do we want to just quickly review that one before we give notice? Just a quick overview, if staff could, just for the public to understand what this is?
Sorry, yes. Just one moment. I'm hitting the wrong buttons here. Okay, so the Energize Bridgewater Project is... You know, as part of the federal funding of it. So in part, it's the... There's a contractual mandate between the federal government and us through the Energize Bridgewater Project to include residents with lived experience of energy poverty in the overall governance of the Smart Cities Project. And so, you know, the practical reality is that these people have actual economic and other practical barriers to their participation. So either potential participants with young children at home or other dependents or residents with motor vehicle with mobility challenges or just the ability to take that unpaid time to come and participate in the advisory committee. And so this creates a risk to the Smart Cities Project and Energize Bridgewater's ability to fulfill that aspect of the contractual mandate. So to mitigate that risk, they proposed to have an honorarium brought in for citizen participants in the advisory committee. And then, as we started to discuss that with respect to Energize Bridgewater, we then needed to assess it in terms of the impact on all of the other advisory committees of council. However, the costs right now, any costs associated with the Energize Bridgewater Advisory Committee would be fully funded. It's all funded through the grant. There's no budget impact to Town Council. So we decided to propose it as a pilot project so that there is time to assess what the financial impact would be if such a program were to roll out to all of the many advisory committees of council. And part of the staff recommendation is that you also direct us to do a robust assessment of that value proposition and how it works, how it's been working, what the empirical sort of uptake is. So we would have the data in terms of how many people did take us up on that so that we can evaluate sort of, you know, whether that policy would roll out to all other advisory committees. It's really what it is.
Before we go to the motion, just to give notice, does anyone have any questions on that? So this is going to come back anyway. We can talk about it on May 11th. So if there's no questions today, you can always email through the CAO to get some answers, and then we'll discuss it again. So hearing no questions, is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Your Worship.
Thank you.
So the motion, "That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the May 11th, 2020 council meeting, the proposed citizen... Sorry. The proposed citizen honorarium and reimbursement pilot policy will be considered to enable provision of an honoraria and meeting cost reimbursements to citizens appointed to committees of council on a pilot basis."
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Counsel Graves. Further discussion? Hearing none. Counsel McGinnis, yearene.
Yay.
Counsel Fergier.
Yay.
Counsel Thorburn.
Yay.
Counsel McDonald.
Yay.
Counsel Graves.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
And myself in favor. So that has passed. So we will see that on May 11th. Thank you. And it is exactly 6:30. So we'll go up to our timed item, which is the 2020-2021... Lots of twenties. Budget discussion. So you have the document. We've had this for a few weeks in front of us. And I really appreciate council diving into this with staff, and we've made some changes based on the feedback we've had over the last few meetings. So I will turn this over to... Tammy, are you running us through this to start? And then we'll go. Okay?
Okay, so the document that's included with the agenda... Okay, so, um, the document that's included with the agenda, you put on the heading for the budget portion, you'll get it there. And you'll see that at our last meeting, the direction that we received from council when we were delivering the budget was to, uh, essentially take the surplus from our, um, service contracts for dispatching criminal records checks and put, place that into a reserve as opposed to lowering, lowering the, the amount of, of the police services budget. So the, the net amount of that was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The Police Commission did consider that. There was a motion passed to, to refer that to the Police Commission for, for, uh, budget adjust, consideration and budget adjustment. And there's correspondence on your, and your, on your agenda as well, that indicates that they, they did do that, that they agreed to place that into a reserve. So there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we had to find in town's operating, rest of the operating budget. And in addition to that, council allows that we, um, put, uh, funds in the budget for parking studies. That's also an operating cost and we estimated that to be forty thousand dollars. So the amount was two hundred and fifteen. At the last meeting, we talked about removing the fountain, which was twelve thousand and it was suggested that we subtract that from the, um, amount that we would have to find for the, the police reserve. So you see the increased funding from operating reserve for, for police is a hundred and sixty-three thousand. It was suggested that we fund that from reserve. Uh, there was a, uh, allocation, um, I guess, adjustment that we did ourselves with the Municipal Joint Services Board, H R Services. So we had to allocate a portion to the Public Service Commission. So that was sixty-eight hundred. In the administration budget, there's a contingency that's been placed in there for, um, the past several years and that's around twenty-five thousand dollars. And that contingency is there for anything that pops up that council may wish to do. Uh, throughout the year, that wasn't budgeted, but maybe study-wise. So sometimes it's land development related, that type of thing. It's being suggested that we could reduce that by ten and leave fifteen thousand there. Um, the tennis club requested a grant of twenty thousand. It's being suggested that you could reduce that to fifteen. That's not their request. That's, that's a suggestion that, that may be an area to find five thousand. Sponsorships, last year we had twenty-five hundred in the budget. We added forty-five hundred just based on requests that have been coming in, but we could reduce that back down to the baseline, which would, uh, save you forty-five hundred. The Public Works Garage Lunchroom, uh, we could reduce that by five, leaving ten to do some work there. Uh, the M I T REAP Program, that Economic Development Program is part of the Avenue Report work that was being done. Uh, the program's not going to start till the fall, is my understanding. So we have the ability to, to reduce the expenses there by four thousand to a ten. And then, uh, we fund some of the cemetery budget from cemetery surplus. We could, uh, to make up the rest of the two hundred and fifteen, we just pull twen, uh, forty-seven hundred from that to give you the two hundred and fifteen thousand that we needed to find.
Great. Thank you for that. Questions on that one?
Yes, David, uh, we, uh, moved the tennis club at Generation Map to product out quite a bit. We had put twenty thousand in there and I would like to see that mat stay at twenty thousand instead of fifteen. There's quite a bit of work to do down there and it's going to be a difficult year anyway with what's going on. I would really like to see that stay at the twenty thousand. Rest of them I can live with, but that one, like, it just doesn't seem fair to me.
So Tammy, can you just run us through the scenarios if, if we adjust this, uh, two hundred and fifteen? So if, um, to Council Thorburn's point, he wants that put up to, uh, back up to twenty, where does the, where does that five now come from?
I probably suggest that we use a little bit more of the cemetery surplus or reserve.
Okay.
Just a follow-up of that, it's Andrew here. Do we know how the tennis club is progressing with, uh, sourcing funds for all of that work outside of the money we're giving?
Uh, we haven't received anything here. I don't know, Jessica, if you know?
Uh, I, I did find out just today that they were unsuccessful with the rec facility development grant. So from the province, um, they just got notice of that late last week. So they are going to reapply for a much smaller grant, uh, from the province. Um, and, um, they're, they're planning what their moves will be. They talked at different points to what happened if they, if they wouldn't get everything that they were trying to get and that they would look at, uh, restructuring what they would be able to fix and, and how they would do that. So that's the work ahead of them now. Um, so the money from the town would certainly take them a long way to getting something done.
Okay, that kind of goes along with what my question was going to be or, or my position on that. I have no objection to going back to twenty, but, um, I don't, I keep going back to the point that our money should be last, last out, not first out. So my question was going to be if they can't tap into those other grants, is there something they can still do that does solve their problem? So if our money was going out the door, I'd want it to be actually solving something.
Which it would be. I know they have a lot of, um, they've been having a lot of discussions with local, uh, with local businesses for assistance as well. Um, and it sort of feels like everybody's waiting to see who's going to make that first commitment before the other ones follow. So that's kind of the situation that they find themselves in at present.
I think the other thing to remember is that before we would actually issue a check, we'd have to get a motion from council to, to grant twenty thousand dollars to the tennis club. So we could ask for an updated, uh, request in terms of how much money they've raised, the scale of the project now, that type of thing, before you would do your final commitment of twenty thousand. This is just putting in the budget, so it's possible.
Fair enough.
Good. Uh, just because the other part of that is if they, if, if we say twenty and they only use ten this year and ten next year, then it's spread across two years. It does make a difference, but, um, other thoughts on this list?
Yeah, I, I think it would be nice to know what their actual business plan is because if I remember correctly, when we talked about this before, it was, I think, sixty-seven thousand dollars to do everything that they wanted done. But we was hoping we could, uh, maybe carry that over three years and they have to look at increasing their place structure to, to help as well. So I think that's correct.
So that can be part of, uh, when this, you know, before this goes out the door is that it would be a motion of council, then at that time, we could probably ask them to come back and give us an update and, and, um, get that information.
David, just a quick comment on the, uh, the, uh, motion by the Police Committee, uh, Commission, sorry. The, um, it, it's a bit vague and I guess I, I worry that when we're all, uh, gone or moved on perhaps that, uh, that it's so vague that the Police Commission could technically use that money, that reserve money for anything. And I guess the intent was for either big potential capital project that might be coming down the pipe or some of that effect. And I, I don't know how to suggest a change to that, um, given it is the Police Commission. They operate autonom, autonomously, but, um, I guess I would have looked within some teeth in that motion more.
It, it is a town reserve and council has to approve anything coming out of a town reserve. If that helps you any.
Yeah, I guess it was more, I guess it's more definition. Maybe it's in, you know, enough is in the minutes, I guess, but yeah, anyway. Okay.
If, uh, just further to Deputy Mayor's point, uh, Dawn, if it's a town reserve, can we move that reserve into a police station building line item?
I, I don't know because, you know, there was some discussion about that and I don't think they wanted to tie it down to that. And the, the other, the other thing that, that we have to remember is part of the reason we're doing this is because the last time we had one of these contracts, it stopped quite suddenly and then there was a huge increase in the police budget. So we're trying to also create a buffer there in case that happens again.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I definitely don't want to see it tied specifically to a, uh, a build because that may never happen and, and.
True.
Yeah.
Bill McGinnis here, uh, if I may, uh, I was the genesis of this idea, I think, and, and I would like to see it tied to a bill. Uh, I like to see it, uh, identified in the reserve as a, a new, uh, bill for the police station. The other question I have, Dawn, is on the police budget, don't have Rick from me, is it a, is it a line item, uh, two hundred and what, five thousand dollars in the reserve?
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, I certainly like to see it designated as a building because ten years down the road, uh, we could renew a lease and if that lease costs us anything of what it's costing us today, it's, uh, fairly absorbent rent. And if we owned our own building, it would make a, a huge savings for our taxpayers. So where this money is on a month-to-month basis that the police is collecting for the fees for service, I honestly believe that it should be designated in a special reserve for a new building because it could stop at, at any time.
I guess the worry I would have with that, uh, Council McGinnis, is if you say new building and we buy that building, is it technically a new building or?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't have to say new building for, uh, for, for, for a police station. You could buy the existing building.
What if the new building never comes? It's a regional police facility that is, I don't know, provided by the prob. I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas, but I wouldn't want it to, to.
The other thing that would concern, concern me is, is if in two years' time, the revenue stops and all of a sudden we're short that amount of money in the police budget, do we just put the police budget up by that amount? Or do we use some of this money to kind of, you know, gradually put the police department pack, the police budget back up?
Well, if I may, we just stop contributing to the reserve and their budget stays the same. What we're showing on the budget, if I understand correctly, is the true costs of policing of the town of Bridgewater. Is it not?
Yes, we're putting, yeah, we're putting the net part in, in reserves. So if we eliminated the other positions, yes.
Yeah.
So I think some of the reason for going into, um, uh, a police reserve is to provide the flexibility. I believe the Police Commission had some concern that it, uh, there hasn't been a decision made by council at this point as to whether or not they wish to build a new building, new release, enter into a new lease agreement, whether there'd be a regional building, whatever it may be. And they want it to ensure that there was flexibility provided. Doesn't mean that you can't, but if you did do a, a, a building reserve and ten years from now, you decide that, um, you're not going to, uh, build a building, you can repurpose those reserve funds. It takes a motion to do so of, uh, uh, council to approve moving funds from one reserve to another. But having it in this reserve just provided that flexibility and didn't nail it down with that requirement. So then if something else came up that was a big ticket item, you could use it?
Yeah, my, my, my only concern was I, I really didn't want to show, uh, the police operating budget to be subsidized by income that is not, not guaranteed. It's on a month-to-month basis. So that was the, that was the idea behind it.
So I think that's been accomplished with putting this in the reserve.
Yeah.
So because, I mean, I certainly feel comfortable with this being in a town reserve, that it would be the, the wisdom of the council of the day, that before that money was spent, um, it would be council that, that has to send that money out on something that they feel is appropriate.
I agree. Okay.
Your Worship?
Are there other questions on those items? So yes, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm thinking like this year we was a fair amount over on our forecast for criminal records checks. And this year, all we're doing is projections and, and that may or may not be true at the end of the year. So I personally would like to see anything that's in there for criminal records checks, would go into that reserve. If it's less, of course, you can't put it in, but if it's more than the proposed budget and a surplus at the end of the year, that that too raised by the police department would go in their reserve.
I would agree with that.
So I think that that just means we'll have, this conversation that we had this year about the reserve is what we would have, or that council of the day would have every year, right? There's a, there's a surplus, that surplus goes into this reserve. And if there's no surplus because they did fewer checks, then there would be nothing to put in reserve.
So we would. I'll make a, I'll make a note in the year-end file to look, to see what the surplus is actually at year-end. And that can be what's put in. And we would need a motion at that time, Dawn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dawn, I appreciate that.
Because I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here, uh, through Council McGinnis's, um, suggestion. So I think, I think Council Thorburn, you're, you're exactly right. That's where we're headed.
Uh, Mayor Mitchell?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I have another suggestion and it's a little late coming to the table. I mentioned it during, uh, a meeting, one or two meetings ago. Uh, we have nothing in the budget with respect, uh, for a bid committee for our downtown core. And I know that's a sensitive topic and I'm not even sure what you would budget for that. And it's probably a little late for this year's budget, but I'd like to see if there's any excess funds at all. We start looking at that.
So we, we do have a, in the budget, funds for an economic development position. Uh, we do have to have a conversation with council, probably, um, three to four weeks out about what adjustments we may need to make, given COVID-nineteen and the impact on our operations. But that's, comes, I don't know where that stands, but assuming that remains, um, that individual would be hired probably towards, uh, the, I think we have six months salary for that individual on the budget. So halfway through the year. And one of the tasks that that person could be given is to look at the establishment of a, a B I D and what we should be funding it and how it could, you know, fund independently and, and all those things. Get you ready for next year.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Further discussion on, uh, any of the budget?
I, I have, um, just two items, David, if I could. It's Andrew.
Yep, go ahead.
I don't know if I have to keep identifying myself or not, but.
We, we, we figure it out.
Have we heard, uh, heard back from the social regional, uh, school board or, uh, education center regarding the crosswalks? That's question one.
Not yet.
No, no, I believe is the answer. I'm not sure. We even heard back from our invitation for the, uh, director to come and meet with us, but it's only been a couple of years, I think.
So, um, you know, I don't want to put, uh, any, um, I don't want to put any children's safety at risk or anything like that. And I believe those crosswalk, uh, you know, uh, overhead crosswalk license owners should be put in place. But, you know, given the amount we put into education, uh, you know, I just feel that we should at least have a conversation or be granted the ability to have a conversation with them before we move forward with those kinds of things. And the second is the, uh, is the arena renovations. You know, we really don't have a clear path forward with arena as far as I'm concerned and, and spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on doing some renovations, which, you know, I argue, you know, are probably needed or warranted, but at the same time, if we don't know what's happening with that building, I don't want to turn around two years from now and have it, uh, flattened and, and lose that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so to speak, because we've decided on a new path. So, uh, I guess from what I understand from the description on that item, we could hold off a year on that hundred and fifty thousand potentially. And that's it.
Yeah, if we, um, the, the renovations were to put a bay and a, and a, and a door in for, uh, storage of our transit vehicles, so our buses, buses inside. And, uh, it's also used for recreation storage to kind of work around that. If we don't do it, then we have to continue to store our, our buses, um, outside. Uh, and assuming the fire department doesn't have any concerns with additional fleet being there, we may have to move them around a bit, like, so logistically, we might have some buses in one location and some in another, um, for storage and, and we could do that for a year, uh, as I indicated. But at some time, we have made transit a permanent service. So at some point, uh, council needs to, to make a decision about where we are going to, how we're going to house these vehicles and.
Sure, understood. Okay.
Your Worship?
Yes, go ahead, Wayne.
If, if I may, I, I would like to contract to Deputy Mayor, uh, those buses are, are outside and, and I see them this year in the fire hall and, especially the new buses should be inside where there's no snow to shovel off. They're ready to get into them and go. And certainly the workers should have a nice, safe place that's, uh, fit to work out of instead of a basement with the poor lighting, uh, with the air now. So I would certainly fully support, uh, putting that door in and having our buses where we can look after them.
So as, as we've said with, with capital items like this, uh, I, I. So as we've said with capital items like this, I would think this would be one of those items that would come back to council just for a double check-in. So if it's taken out of the budget, it's taken out of the budget. But if it's left in the budget, I think that at $150,000, we probably ask staff to come back to council and say, are you sure you want us to go ahead with this? Because then we'll have a better picture of what COVID has done to our finances and to the state of these projects.
Sure, I could live with that for sure.
That's a direction.
Yeah, me too.
I'll just, I want to speak to the overhead signals to the school. I think first of all, we do need to have a conversation with the board because we do, we do fund, I'm going to say the activity that happens around there, whether it's the crossing guards or signalization. I do think that, I've raised this a couple of times, that doing a higher visibility crosswalk, every little bit helps. And so, if I know that the school has requested a rainbow crosswalk in front, and even doing that, I would think would help because you can certainly see that better. So I'd like to see us look at that. And I know that the school itself would be willing to help with that. That's low cost, I think, with high impact.
Mayor Mitchell, can I add to that? It's Jennifer.
Yep.
I really like the idea of a rainbow crosswalk or something of the sort. I saw them in Moncton and they are very visible. Also, it's visible during the day when we are concerned about students, whereas the lit overhead signs are more effective probably at night, is kind of my guess, when we don't have students crossing as much. So I really think that the rainbow crosswalks or something similar makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the budget? Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
Can I just make confirmation on one thing? So we're going to increase the tennis club line item back up to 20,000 and take that additional 5,000 out of the cemetery surplus to make that 9,700 from cemetery surplus. Is that correct?
Does anyone have any objections to that? Bring the tennis back up to, tennis club back up to $20,000?
No.
No.
One question, Phil McGinnis here. The tennis club, is that what they asked for the 20,000? Or is that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, so back up 20,000 with the rest going from the cemetery reserves. Okay. Unless there's someone else that has something to discuss in the budget, I'd be looking for a motion, please.
I will move that, your worship. You ready? I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the 2021 budget tabled as follows. One, a capital budget in an amount of $5,845,454 funded as follows. 1.170 capital other revenue, 951,454 from government funding, $1,375,000 gas tax reserve, and a capital reserve withdraw of 184,000, other funding of 50,000. Borling, 2,115,000 from the municipal finance corporation. Two, operating expenditures in an amount of $21,519,251, which includes $1,170,000 capital other revenue, zero transferred to capital reserve, $639,224 from town debenture repayment, $362,32 for LCLC debenture repayment, 184,000 capital reserve repayment, zero transferred to special purpose tax reserve, $21,633 transferred to sinking fund reserve, and $361,059 transferred to wastewater operating reserve, and $205,000 transferred to police operating reserve. Three, operating revenue of $21,519,251, which includes a $9,500 transferred from capital reserves, 35,144, 35,144 transferred from special purpose tax reserve, and 474,750 transferred from operating reserve. Four, commercial tax rate to be set at $3.97 per hundred of full assessed value of property. Five, residential tax to be set at $1.65 per hundred of adjusted assessed value after cap. Six, a special purpose tax for the payment of debenture principal and interest for the Lunenburg County multipurpose center is followed. One, commercial tax rate we set at 0.06 cents per hundred for the full assessed value of the property and the residential tax rate we set at 0.06 cents per hundred of adjusted assessed value of the property after cap. Seven, the interest rate be paid on capital reserves be set at 0%. And eight, depreciation in an amount of $3,150,000, which is excluded from the tax rate calculation. And nine, the interest rate on the overdue counts be set at 12% add-on, charge 1% per month in the decision on the due date of the final tax bill we made at a later date.
Thank you, Council Thurbin. Seconded by?
I'll second that, Andrew.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further comment? Hearing none. We'll go around again. Council McGinnis here, Renee.
Yay.
Council Frasier.
Yay.
Council Thurbin.
Yay.
Council McDonald.
Yay.
Council Graves. Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
And I am in favor. Budget passes unanimously. And normally we all go around the room and make grand speeches about the budgets. And I do want to allow people, if they have, if they do want to share something, I do want to just say, as always, thank you to our Director of Finance and her team and to our CIO and all the senior managers who worked through this budget. These are stressful times. They worked through some of it before COVID. When we were all in the office and they worked through some of it while they were dispersed around in their homes. So not easy under the circumstances and a lot of unknowns. So as well as staff, I want to thank council because we know that the final product of this budget may look a little different as we start to realize the effects of the coronavirus on our tax base and people's ability to pay. So I appreciate everyone's flexibility on this. And I'm really proud of what we've been able to do here. We have not had a tax rate increase in a very, very long time. The last action we took on taxes was a decrease. And I think we are very fortunate when we look at municipalities across the country where that is not the case. So that's good fiscal management on top of adding services like transit and other permanent service. To be able to do that without a rate increase, I think is a testament to the incredible staff and council that we have. So I want to just thank all of you very much.
We agree.
Does anyone else have anyone else, anything else before we go into the next part of that? There's another motion to that for the sewer rates?
I'd like to say something, your worship.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Wayne.
Just a couple of things. Certainly this budget had many challenges. More questions than answers and with the virus. Certainly our small business will be impacted. I'm not sure how they will go forward, but I would encourage everybody to help out and support the small business shop locally by Canadian, try and jumpstart our economy here. But I think it's doable, but we just don't know what our revenue lines may or may not be. And it looks like it may be a while yet before it's done. But I personally would like to thank Dawn Kaiser. I know she's leaving. And Dawn and I go way back to my term as Deputy Fire Chief, when I used to go down to her office and do budget work. And then as chief and of course as counselor. She was always there. She was always willing and eager to help me and and answer my questions. And I certainly will miss her and I wish her nothing but the best. Thank you again, Dawn, for everything you've done.
Thank you. Council McDonald, I believe you were next.
Sure, yeah, I really just want to kind of echo some of your thoughts there and thanks staff. I know this could not have been easy when you can't pop into each other's offices and have the conversations and brainstorming that you would normally have. You're working from home and things aren't as accessible. The information isn't at your fingertips when you've got kids and pets nagging a little bit. So bravo to all of you because that was not easy to get through. And we really appreciate the fantastic job you did putting this budget together. You really knocked it out of the park again with all of those challenges facing you. And a thank you to the police commission for the partnership and for the openness to working on ideas for the future and making sure that we're fiscally responsible for the community. I don't think every community enjoys that relationship as strongly as we do. And it's really, really great to be able to work together so well and so easily. And, you know, this budget focuses a lot on wastewater, which doesn't necessarily seem like the exciting stuff, but it is the foundation for all of the exciting stuff. And the momentum that Bridgewater has, I have no doubt will come back after this. We may come back stronger. And like Wayne said, if we support each other and support local, I think we're definitely going to need that groundwork done and ready because people were knocking on our door before and they're still going to be knocking on our door when this is all over. And I'm excited to see the future. And Dawn, your final budget with us, you have been so patient over the last eight years. As a new counselor eight years ago, I'm so glad to have had the privilege to have learned under your supervision and direction. I don't think I could have gotten a better education in municipal finance from anyone else. Thank you so much for the patience and for your skill and you will be deeply missed. I'm unsure how we'll get through it, but I'm sure we will. And we may have to call you every time of the time. So don't turn off the phone.
For sure. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Phil McGinnis here.
Yeah, sorry.
No, just briefly, this will probably be my last budget. I've been sitting around the table for 20 years. And Mayor Mitchell, you can attest to what I'm going to say. Our budget process has evolved greatly. We used to sit around the table and argue over a $200 grant to someone when we're talking about $19 million. So the process has evolved in large part, that's the credit of Dawn and her leadership in this area. It's outstanding. But bigger than that, our town has evolved and we are evolving. And we're setting the example for a lot of other towns in this province and indeed the country. And so we have a lot to be proud of. We have an excellent staff that are absolutely at the best resource our council has. The staff that lead us and help us in everything that we do. And I've often told my kids, one of the biggest words or most important words in the dictionary is the word trust. And when you can trust your staff, that they're going to give you the right information and that it's reliable, it makes the job a lot easier. And from that point of view, I want to thank the staff. And I almost has to say this, this has almost been an enjoyable process. So thank you.
Thank you, Council McGinnis. Council Frasier?
Yes, I just want to echo some of the comments of my fellow counselors. Just taking a moment to thank staff for their time as well as working to deliver the town's budget for the upcoming fiscal year in a transparent and easy to follow process. Because I know that that is key for myself and to be able to understand. So I thank you to the finance teams, the senior team. I also appreciate the continued dialogue and updates that we have quarterly at council throughout the year. I feel this is very helpful and keeps us informed as well as the progress of our budget. So I think, just want to reemphasize that those quarterly updates are very vital and important. I just want to echo the mayor's comments about keeping the status quo for the residential tax rate and our commercial rate at status quo. I know that's challenging, but I think that's, again, successful to staff in managing the finances and keeping it status quo. And I just want to say that having the 10-year capital budget plan, having that to review every budget time is key in planning. And just want to emphasize again the importance of planning and looking 10 years out, which helps manage our budget. And like most of you, we know the challenges that come with COVID-19 and a lot of unknowns with what, how our budget would be impacted. But I feel confident with the council team along with our staff that we will be stronger together and get through this. So I just want to thank everybody for their time and being successful. So thank you. And to Dawn, I wish you all the best in your retirement and thank you for your time here with the town of Bridgewater.
Thank you. I'll miss you guys.
David?
Yes, go ahead, Michael.
You know, I also want to thank you, Dawn, her team and all the towns department and staff. All the efforts in putting the budget together. It was thoughtful and it was well laid out and certainly in challenging times. So congratulations to you all. And to you, Dawn, a happy retirement. I hope it's long and full of fun and adventure. So thank you.
That's the plan.
You go, girl.
Deputy Mayor Tanner, did you want to?
Yeah, well, I have to say something now, no?
Oh, yeah, you kind of have to. It's weird if you don't.
Dawn, as always, it's been a pleasure working with you. And yeah, definitely all the best in your retirement. You've definitely guided me along numerous paths over the years. And I appreciate all the input and quick responses you've given to some very strange questions I've asked over the years. So I appreciate that. You know, I'm very happy that we're able to hold the tax rate, especially given the very large and massive projects we're undertaking, you know, in wastewater and the Logan Road realignment and so on. And so while I'm nervous about the amount of debt we're taking on going forward, at the same time, I'm very hopeful. And I think we'll see the province and the federal government step up, especially given what we've just gone through to assist with some of that work. And it's all good. It's the price of progress. So glad to see Bridgewater is continuing to grow.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is that everybody? I lost track. Dawn, any final words for just your final budget, Dawn, before we move into the sewer section of the budget?
Well, it's been a pleasure. It's been, be 12 years in June, so I can't believe how fast it's gone. And I've always enjoyed working with all of you. And there's a great staff at the town of Bridgewater and I'll really miss you all. And call anytime and I'll drop in sometime.
Perfect, thank you. Before we move out of budget, we do have another section there. Someone is prepared to make the motion on the sewer bylaw?
Sure, I'll do that if you want to.
Thank you, thank you.
I move that pursuant to Chapter 24, Public Sewers Bylaw, Section 28. Town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the sewer rates as follows. The owner of every house, shop or other property within the town of Bridgewater connected with the public sewer of the town of Bridgewater shall pay to the town for each property owned by him or her a charge or rate of use of the sewage system as follows. Residential and land lease communities, one dwelling unit, $404.05 plus $153.95 for each additional dwelling unit. Hotels and motels, base charge of $858.20 plus $49.35 for each guest unit. Hospitals, base charge $858.20 plus $49.35 for each patient bed. Other commercial, shopping centers, institutional, industrial users, for the first user, $858.20 plus $439.10 for each additional user. The owner of every shop, a house, shop or other property within a municipality of the District of Lunenburg connected to the sewage collection system in Hebbel shall pay to the town a charge or rate of use of the sewage system as follows. Residential and land lease communities, per unit, $483.10. Commercial, shopping centers, institutional, industrial users, per unit, $1,026.10.
Thank you. Seconded by, thank you, Council McGinnis. Further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. Council McGinnis here, Renee.
Yay.
Council Frasier.
Yay.
Council Thurbin.
Yay.
Council McDonald.
Yay.
Council Graves.
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yay.
And I am in favor. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, from one exciting thing to another, we're going down back to reports and recommendations and we have RFP 2019- And we have RFP 2019-18, Supply and Delivery of Low Floor Accessible Transit Buses. So I will turn that over to staff to just give us a quick overview for the public, and then we'll discuss.
I think that's Matt.
All right, Matt, you're up.
Frick's sake.
He's coming.
There we go. Voice is there. It's taking us on. There we go. Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Am I there?
Yes, you are.
We got you.
I won't make the mistake somebody did publicly in the RCMP show there that was on the last update on the crisis for the shooting. I don't know if you guys caught that or not. Somebody laid the F-bomb. So let me go to my memo here. Sorry, I'm just bringing things up. Word. There we go. Okay, yeah, so thank you very much. And just a little bit of a background on it. So we know in March 2019 that we received funding, $350,000 from the Department of Communities, Culture and Heritage for the purchase of new buses. We also received $25,000 for the last two years in the PTAP or Public Transit Assistance Program. So we have a total of $400,000 in our funded reserve for this bus. Last year, this project was on tap to be completed with a $600,000 budget. So 400 from funds, from grants, and another 200,000 from town funds. Back in, before I was hired, there was a memo to council with respect to kind of a bus type, because it was noted then the buses were getting very high maintenance requirements and they reached their serviceable lives. I believe the document 18-179B, council accepted staff's recommendation to look at the purchase of heavy-duty low-floor chassis buses equipped with bifold ramp. So yeah, so in that vein, we staff issued, after some discussions through kind of a committee of staff, we developed an RFP which was issued, developed in February, issued in March. We received four submissions from Crestline, Coats Limited, Grand West Transportation International Limited, Overland Custom Coats, and Western Canada Bus. The submissions were reviewed by the same committee of staff who developed the RFP. The criteria looked at were qualifications, references, service specification, compliance, schedule, warranty, any added value, and life cycle cost, or in other words, total cost of ownership. In the table below is the average scores based on the people or staff that reviewed it. So you can see the breakdown was 75% technical score, 25% non-technical, or the total cost of ownership. The highest bid was Western Canada Bus. And the bus that they are proposing is a 2020 Champion LF or Low Floor Transit Buses, which is actually on a 2021 Ford E450 chassis, complete with bifold ramps and other specified purposes. It's probably, I noticed in terms of some of the conversations leading up to the, after the submission of this memo, there's been some conversation around just in terms of the specs of the bus, which I unfortunately left out of there. So it's probably a good time to look at some of those kind of questions that were raised. The capacity of this bus, one of the highest score is 18 seats with no wheelchair. If there are two wheelchairs on the bus, the seating will be lowered to 14, with the understanding that based on regulations, we are allowed 50% of the total seating capacity. That was based on standing room. The current buses we have certainly are larger. They were donated to us. We didn't get into size buses. But they are 32 seats, cedar buses, or 28 with wheelchairs. We did, the staff did select smaller buses, because normally it's understanding that the buses operate less than 50% capacity or 50% full. And obviously, we want to optimize the size based on what's available now for growth as well as the financial hit we have in operations budget from year to year. AC is included in there. Unfortunately, Wi-Fi was added as provisional cost, but it wasn't included in this recommendation, mainly because not all the submissions submitted that they could do it. Some provided costs, some didn't. So for, to compare apples to apples, I left it out. But the recommended bidder says they can assist us with that, with a simple setup is what they suggested. And what other? The seating, the number of seats can be tweaked a bit, but there is some concern that based on the size of the chassis, we can only have so many seats, based on weight and regulation. And if we did tweak them, what it means is the seats become more narrow, which necessarily may not be comfortable for everybody. The bus can handle motorized wheelchairs or scooters. And there's a, the capacity of the ramp is 800, or sorry, 1,000 pounds. We also, staff tried to look forward to with the type of restraint system. So rather than the restraint system that we have now, we actually expect a more flexible restraint system to accommodate larger or even smaller wheelchairs or scooters. And I think that was the clarifications that I could think of. So on that, in that as well, we did specify or leave it open in the specification for electric buses. Unfortunately, we didn't get any submissions. It was noted in a couple of proposals that they are, all of the manufacturers are looking at creating an electric or constructing electric bus that would suit our needs, but they won't be available for either purchasing or supply until 2022, I believe. But good news on that, we have been, I believe Jessica has been approached first through Smart Cities and Nova Scotia Power regarding a pilot electric bus program, as well as testing a vehicle-to-grid technology. And what that means, or what I found out it meant, is that they're actually looking for the bus to then be a source of power for a community building. So would plug back in and provide the power to a building. So certainly, while it appears a very timely proposal, staff wouldn't recommend foregoing the purchase of new buses in case the pilot buses don't meet our needs, because we do have concerns with the fact that the battery life may not allow a full or a full day's use. So require a midday charge, which necessarily our scheduling isn't based around that. Financial implications, I've already noted that there's $600,000 in the budget, 400 from grants, which is great. And I have two things with that. I have confirmed with Department of Culture, Communities, Culture and Heritage that we can expend the grant money before we spend our own town funds, as well as in case of the, due to the COVID pandemic. I've asked for a further extension of the grant, so this will be our second extension, which I believe that document's been signed and sent. That gives us the ability to have the buses delivered up to March 31st, 2022. So just on the, I think the relative last page, the breakdown of the costs. The purchase of two buses, this is approximately $370,000. The inclusion of extended warranty is another 550. Then we get to the subtotal and less HST rebate. So the total after net HST is $391,260.38, which actually, with our funds available, leaves us with remaining funds, grants of $87,139.62. Just as a note, staff applied for an additional PTAP fund on April 16th, so we can top that reserve backup for future vehicle replacements, additions, bus shelters, or terminals. This is in line with Goals 2 and 3 of the Economic Action Plan or Strategic Priorities. The options available, purchase the transit buses as recommended, while continuing to pursue the piloting and electric bus option. Purchase one bus from the recommended bidder and pursue the electric bus option through Nova Scotia Power. Purchase the third option, purchase buses from any unrecommended bidders, while continuing to purchase the pilot of an electric bus through Nova Scotia Power or advise staff not to purchase any buses and pursue the electric bus pilot, the piloting of an electric bus only. I see a spelling error, because I have "and" in there a couple of times extra. Communications, as noted, will all be through, once completed, through the Town's Communications Manager, and the Engineering Department will provide any assistance as required. So back up to the recommendation. Staff would recommend that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater award the supply and delivery of two new low-floor buses, transit buses, based on RFP 2019-18 to Western Canada Bus, for a total price of $341,454.70 plus HST, or $391,260.38 net HST. Thank you.
Well done, Matt. Well done.
Yeah, I'm not used, I'm still used to getting, I have three screens, so which one I'm looking at? So I think I stared at my middle screen the whole time.
So Phil McInnes here, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
We're buying two buses?
Correct.
That's what, that's the staff's recommendation.
For 400, or sorry, $391,000, and that includes wheelchair accessibility and Wi-Fi?
Not Wi-Fi. Unfortunately, the provisional pricing from that range from not available to $7,400. There wasn't a lot of, enough information for staff to make the recommendation on that specifically with the bid supplier. But with follow-up with Western Canada Bus, he believes it can simply be added, and most of that cost being on the town side with an internet provider. So they think they can add it simply.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Two questions, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Council Graves.
So Matt, do we have an ETA on the buses?
The tender specification, or the, sorry, RFP specification required them to be delivered by March 31st, 2021. I did, I was a little worried, because I put the RFP out before the COVID pandemic. But they did say that it was likely doable, but they would certainly appreciate the extra time if any extra time could be provided. That's why I asked for the extension of our grant again. But we're looking at March 31st, 2021 to be.
And the second question, if I may, we will still be pursuing the relationship with Nova Scotia Power for the pilot, the test?
Very much so. I did kind of note in, the conversations have been slow, but understanding that the first indication they gave staff, I believe with Jessica, was about a week before March break, which then everything kind of went.
Went to hell. Okay, thank you.
Council Frasier, did you have a question?
Yes, yes, please. Just a couple of things. So in the RFP, I know the successful bidder, you'd mentioned 14 seats with two wheelchair spots, or 18 without the wheelchair. Just, so in comparing apples to apples, so all the other companies, were they the same number of seats when we're?
Yeah. Okay, so I just pulled up my cut sheet just in case of that question there. So two of the bidders had the exact same seating plan, just about, given little tweaks. So it's 18 or 14 plus with two wheelchairs. One of the bidders actually had a much smaller seating plan with a total of 13 seats, or nine seating seats with two wheelchairs, so it's a much smaller unit. There was a fourth bid that would meet our specifications, that had 24 seats, or sorry, a maximum of 17 seats with two wheelchair positions. But in that bid there for that one, the references, the price was higher and the references were not as good.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment with our user groups. I know we have daycares and as well as day camps moving in the summer. And I'm just wondering, what would the, I know you mentioned 50% of the number can stand. I'm just wondering, with our regular user groups, would be accommodating those? I'm just wondering if anybody can comment on the larger groups that we do use our bus?
So that example, when I talked to Jim Coleman, the transit supervisor, the example he used would be a local daycare provider. And it's my understanding that the protocol is for them to call ahead. So if they did that, and we knew that we were going to have a large user group at once, possibly using both buses at the same time, where they have one strictly for the daycare and the other one do its usual route, was kind of the option provided, which is a very insignificant cost to do that.
One more, eight, four hours? You don't have to pay minimum hours?
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Good question.
Sorry, I missed that.
Sorry. So if you're going to use two buses at once to accommodate a childcare center, do you not have to pay minimum hours to staff, or is this something that Jim would do or?
The logistics of that haven't been worked out, but I would assume any of our personnel policy, human resource policy, or union would apply to those.
So then it becomes expensive?
For the amount, I don't think it happens all that often, that I'm aware of.
Okay. So it might be something that, a fast forward a year, the buses are here. One of the daycares wants to use it to go to the museum, for example. They could try it, and if it doesn't work, because they can't all get on the bus because it's busy, they may have to make arrangements with staff on how to do that. And if there's a cost, then they're going to have to, I guess, kind of work that out.
If I could just add to that, the experiences that we've had to date generally were when there were multiple day camps, it was in the summertime when there was multiple day camps, our own, Bridgewater Daycamps included, trying to return back to their day camp site at the same time. And so since that time, and since we had a couple of instances where those collided at the same time, the daycamps and staff have worked with them to try and figure out how to coordinate that better so that it wouldn't have to happen. So that was just a couple of times where that really overwhelmed the bus system, and it hasn't happened in recent time since then.
Perfect.
Thanks, Jessica.
No problem.
Other discussion?
Question, David?
Yes?
Yeah, how many riders will that bus take? Are we looking at about 30 with the two wheelchairs? 14 seats, two in the seat, plus the two wheelchairs?
No, it's 14 total.
14 passengers?
Yes.
Oh.
Sitting?
Sitting.
But then you're going to have 50% of that, again, standing, correct?
Seven more.
No, it's actually, it's based on your total seating. So it would be, since our total seats is 18, we would have nine that'll be allowed to stand, because we have spec the arm rails or handrails across throughout the bus.
Okay. Okay. So I just, maybe for the public, that's probably wondering why we didn't get an electric bus. And Matt, you did explain that we didn't have any bidders. But I think some of the discussions we've had is that it's kind of, it's almost the wrong time. So there's electric buses out there for big cities, big buses, right? So the ones you would see in Halifax, or Toronto, or Vancouver, who have made some big purchases for electric buses, which are too big for our town. And the market and the availability of town buses, let's call them, like this size, has not yet been fully developed. And so we're right in that, kind of the right system at the wrong time. So as Matt said, if this was 2022 or 2023 that we were looking for new buses, there might be electric options for us. But the problem is, of course, with the buses we have, we cannot wait two or three more years for new buses. So right now, we're in the, we're in that spot where we have to buy a gas or diesel bus, because there's just not the electric options that there will be the next time we need to buy a bus. Does that sound about right, Matt?
Yeah, and I mean, it's, at least we have the position where other transit authorities have probably gone through a number of iterations. We only have to make one step likely, and then we can move on to hopefully electric buses, subject to council approval and budget, of course, but. uh, subject to council approval and budget, of course, but, uh, at least the lifespan of these, uh, buses are around five, uh, five to seven years, or I'd rather, I prefer to say 350,000 kilometers. Um, so if, if the, we're probably at a good spot to maximize the life of these buses, and, uh, the electric buses will have gone through what we probably will need, a first or second generation, uh, of design. Um, so we, we should end up getting a good product when we act, when we really need it.
And I'm really hoping that this Nova Scotia Power pilot could come to fruition. That sounds really cool as well. Any, uh, any other discussion before I give call for the motion?
One more question.
Go ahead, Wayne.
A tiny one. So will that, uh, come equipped with, for wheelchairs? Or is that a modification you want to make when, when the buses get here?
They will be equipped right away, uh, with a front entrance bifold ramp. Uh, so as soon as we get them, we'll, we don't have to do any modifications with respect to the ramp. Uh, and, uh, on top of that, the, the ramp that is specified, if knock on wood, there was a failure of the electric option, it's a very easily manual pump system, uh, that you can, uh, you can do yourself rather than some of the older tech, technology.
Great, thank you. Okay, there's no other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Michael.
I move that town council for the Town of Bridgewater award RFP 2019-18 for the supply and delivery of two new low-floor accessible transit buses, the Western Canada Bus, for a total price of $431,454.70 plus HST, $3,000, $391,260.38 net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McGinnis. I just, before we go to the question, I do want to thank the province of Nova Scotia, um, who from the very beginning have been super supportive, and through their grants that they've given, this is possible. So, um, I know our MLA, uh, worked hard, and Mr. Glavine worked hard to, to get us this funding, and without this funding, I, I don't know where we'd be. So, um, thanks to the province for that.
Absolutely.
Ready for a question?
Question?
Question being called. Uh, Councilor McGinnis, yea or nay?
Yea.
Councilor, Councilor Frasier?
Yea.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yea.
Councilor McDonald?
Yea.
Councilor Graves?
Yea.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yea.
Uh, I am definitely in favor. Motion has carried. Thank you. Thank you, Matt, for that.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to, uh, all the staff who worked on this. Very exciting day. Um, down to business arising, unfinished business, um, we have a request to re-designate now Lunenburg County funding. Um, so as council will recall, we had funding that we had designated to their, um, their, uh, upcoming road trip, which obviously due to COVID-19 has had to be canceled. So the request is if we could, uh, redirect that funding, reallocate that funding, um, for their, uh, attendance at the Dalhousie Medical School Physician Retreat in PEI in October 2020, if council so wishes.
Just a question?
Yes?
So what happens if, uh, in October 2020, social distancing is still in effect and there is no conference?
Then I believe that that would come back again, and they would say, we have another event we can attend when it's, uh, all clear, or do you want the money back or something else?
As long as that's the understanding.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, specifically for this event, just like it was specifically for their Ontario road trip. So, um, we have earmarked it for this, uh, PEI retreat in October.
Do you want a motion, Your Worship?
Yes, please.
I would move that town council for the Town of Bridgewater authorize staff to direct now Lunenburg County to relocate funds previously given in support of the Royal and Remote Medicine Conference to support now Lunenburg County planners' attendance at the Dalhousie Medical School Physician Retreat in PEI in October 2020.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second that.
Councilor Graves, further discussion? Hearing none. Councilor McGinnis, yea or nay?
Yea.
Councilor Frasier?
Yea.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yea.
Councilor McDonald?
Yea.
Councilor Graves?
Yea.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yea.
I'm in favor, so motion is carried, and we're down to our last item, which is, uh... Oops. All right, so, uh, last item, Policy 92, interim tax billing. Uh, I don't know if we need to go through this again with staff. Tammy, did you want to bring anything up on that?
Yeah, uh, well, the, at the last meeting, council had given direction that we prepare the amendments that would enable us to, uh, delay the mailing of our tax bill until the end of May, which may maybe due the end of June. Normally, we mail them out for the end of April, and they're due the end of May. So the, uh, the policy amendments have been prepared, and so essentially, we just said that it's normally going to be mailed out on, before May 1st and due on May 31st, um, unless otherwise approved by resolution to council. So you've given us that direction to do that, so that those would, that would fit into place. And the second tax bill is mailed out the end of August and due on, or about September 30th, unless otherwise approved, with both the date of mailing and the due date determined by resolution to council. So we'll be coming back to you in the, in the summer, again, to get confirmation of tax billing dates, but normally they would be the end of August for the final, with it being due September 30th.
Okay, thank you. And we, uh, we hope to hear, um, from NSFM, uh, from the province through NSFM this week on, uh, on their plans for municipalities, and, uh, that'll give us a roadmap to work this out. Any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Um, so, motion that town council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the revised interim tax bill policy as presented in Document 20-080B as Policy 92 for the town effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Councilor Thorburn, further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Councilor McGinnis, yea or nay?
Yea.
Councilor Frasier?
Yea.
Councilor Thorburn?
Yea.
Councilor McDonald?
Yea.
Councilor Graves? I saw your mouth, but I didn't hear it though. Uh, Deputy, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yea.
I'm in favor. So motion is carried. That was like the sound of my bones. Okay, um, that's, that's it. Uh, again, thank you to Dawn for, um, guiding us through your final budget. Um, you've been a phenomenal director of finance, so, um, congratulations on your upcoming retirement. We wish you all the best. Thank you to staff for the, the incredible job you've done. And if there's no further business, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Show me.
Okay, moved by Councilor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.